Hutchinson City Council meeting for June twenty second, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, Mayor, Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you tonight. Make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Indication, we do not have anybody here tonight, so we will just have a moment of silence, please. All right, moving on. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? I just wanna recognize the uh, J.C.'s for putting on the water carnival this last weekend. Uh, looked like most of the things were very well attended, so uh, thank you to them.
And I think we also ought to honor, honor the new queen and princess and Mr. Hutchinson and the woman of the year. So, congrats to all of them.
All righty, uh, we do have two resolutions underneath there. Uh, we have resolution number one-five-three-one-nine. Resolution accepting one thousand dollars donation from Steve and Kay Nelson for the city public arts program. And we have resolution number one-five-three-two-zero, accepting, resolution accepting cash donation for the law enforcement memorial park fund.
I'll make a motion to accept both uh, donations.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Uh, citizens addressing the council, uh, just please come forward, state your name and address, and uh, please keep it to five minutes. All righty, uh.
Didn't wanna rush the, the thing. Um, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to ask, is this the moment you'd like to take comments on item number thirteen, twenty-one dash eight-twenty-four? Or would you like to wait until that portion of the agenda?
You have uh, five minutes.
Okay, great. Um, my name is Morgan Baum. I live at nine twenty-five Second Avenue Southwest Hutchinson, and I'm a small business owner in town in the C-three district of Hutchinson, which is the historic downtown. I am excited about the opportunity, um, that's under item number thirteen this evening, to change the C-three zoning to allow industrial technology in our neighborhood. In fact, it'll be right in my neighborhood. I will look at it every day, and I'm thrilled about the idea of bringing seventy new jobs downtown Hutchinson. What I'd like to know is if there's any policy or procedural, um, things to our, uh, that we could use so that this is an exception and not the rule to add manufacturing to C-three. I love our downtown. I think it's extremely well-designed. I love the Imagine Hutchinson pro- um, proposals and bringing tourists and bringing our community to our main street. And so, if there's any way to make this an exception and not the rule, so ten years from now, we don't have a, uh, an entire industrial technology downtown, I would really like to see that. The new restaurants, the retail shops like me, the parks and the art and the festivals that are on Main Street, bring vibrance to the community, and these seventy new jobs will also be a great addition, but not forever. If there's any way, that's all I'm asking. So, if you could answer that during number thirteen, I'd really appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll have Dan address that, um, when he gets to that agenda item. Just one reminder too, um, for the council and for the public, as with any ordinance, there's two readings. So the first reading is tonight, and the second reading, if there was a second reading, would take place at our next meeting. So there's opportunities to where if maybe not all the questions get answered tonight during Dan's presentation, or dur- during Dan's, um, addressing that agenda item, there'll be obviously another meeting as well.
All right, thanks, Matt. Uh, anyone else? All right, uh, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of June eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the regular meeting minutes of June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of renewing agreement between the city of Hutchinson and the independent school district, four twenty-three, relating to the establishment and operation of jointly sponsored parks, recreation, and community education programs. Well, B is approval of renewing food vendor license for Rafael Ramirez. Uh, C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Saint Anastasia Catholic Church on September eleventh and twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And D is approval of change order number one, letting number one project number twenty-one dash oh-one, two thousand twenty-one pavement management program. Uh, E is approval of item for the First Avenue Northeast improvement and Jefferson Street extension project, letting number ten, project number twenty-one dash ten and twenty-one dash eleven. Underneath there, we have two resolutions. We have resolution number one-five-three-two-one, resolution declaring cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments. And resolution number one-five-three-two-two, resolution setting hearing on proposed assessments. F is approval of resolution number one-five-three-two-four, resolution modifying the three million dollar community improvement fund balance commitments. And G is claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, or by Chad, second by Mary to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. We have a public hearing, but uh, Matt, can we jump ahead?
Yeah, we've got twenty minutes to our scheduled public hearing, so if you wanna just jump to item nine and work our way down.
All righty, sounds good. Uh, resolution number one-five-three-two-six, resolution accepting bids and awarding contracts on the new police station.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we um, we had a bid opening on June tenth. Uh, we had, which is by far the largest bid opening ever. Parted, probably all the bid openings combined didn't equal, um, the process that we just went through. We had a hundred and fifty-five bids on twenty-eight different bid packages, and so, um, we've got Pete here from the Integrity Group. I'll kinda let him probably give a highlight of uh, of that process, and then uh, we can talk about the next steps after that. So, welcome, Pete.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me. Uh, Pete Philippi, Integrity Group, we're the construction managers for the project. Uh, as Matt mentioned, on June tenth, we had a very successful bid opening, um, like you indicated, well north of a hundred and fifty bids, um, in twenty-eight different packages, and uh, we haven't seen that kind of response for quite a few years, so, we did spend quite a bit of time soliciting the marketplace, and uh, the efforts paid off with the number of bids that we did receive. I did have uh, four handouts. I think they made it your way. One was the overall bid tab. Um, it's got the listing of the different categories. Uh, we had highlighted the low uh, contractors in each. Uh, we did have three categories where contractors did pull uh, their bid. One was category eleven roofing. There was some wood blocking. They didn't bid the package complete. Category thirteen, which is the aluminum uh, storefront entrances, windows, et cetera. They had an error on their bid form. And category eighteen, which was the painting, they submitted their bid with a incorrect bid bond. Any questions on the bid tab at all?
Pete, you know, I've had a couple people ask why, why do we bid out so many categories? I don't know if you wanna maybe touch on that, so.
Yes, uh, one of the main reasons is, is it's, it's less intimidating for local contractors. So by breaking that apart and kinda see where some of the distribution of bids are, it's not lumped in, uh, it's packaged out. Uh, it's not sent through three more channels and marked up twice, so you, basically these packages are smaller. It's a direct bid to the city, uh, without markup, uh, going through like a general contractor or a big lump sum, um, bid. So, the efficiency has gained in, in that regards. Uh, at the same time, a lot of these contractors are very comfortable bidding this approach. Uh, they know those contracts run direct with the city. Uh, it's not through a general contractor, so it's uh, given pay request, they, those paychecks are received, and uh, like I said, with the turnout we had, uh, welcome turnout.
Did you find that more uh, pertinent to this such uh, project by uh, seeing lower figures on the tail end of everything being added up?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Just the, just the idea that you broke everything down. Did you see that as a, I know you see it as an advantage of doing that, and I appreciate that part of it. I just was wondering if you've, if you got out of it what you expected to get out of it, uh, from a bid standpoint.
I think so. We spent the, the last twelve days qualifying these contractors. I think for the most part, you've got a good group of people uh, on it, and when you can pull a little over five bidders per package, that's very good representation. Um, at the same time, by having this aggressive bidding, I think you'll see when I get to the next page of our estimate versus where the actual budget stands, it was well worth the, the effort. Um, we did have one bid alternate, um, that was uh, in the project as well, and that pertained to category thirteen, and what that basically, that alternate was, was seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars with Ford Metro. It was basically to take the uh, glass openings around the exterior of the building and put a higher detention or security laminated, uh, insulated glass assembly in there. Uh, currently, we have uh, just a clear insulated glass that you would typically see in most places. Uh, this just enhances uh, the, I call it the tension side of it, but assault resistant of those windows. Um, and if so chosen, that alternate would be an additional seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I did put some budget scenarios together along with uh, bringing back the last estimate we brought to council back the end of April. There are two budgets. Basically, uh, if you look at the budgets up on top, one's just gonna say the city of Hutchinson new police facility. The second budget's gonna say city of Hutchinson with the addition of alternate one, uh, which is adding the security laminated glass. If you look at the one with the base bid, you'll see the number down below highlighted just for comparison purposes. Uh, we had twelve million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents. When you compare that number back to the construction costs, uh, that I brought back in April, on the trade contractor alone, it's eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars lower. At the same time, our construction costs, by the time we reduce our contingencies and things of that nature to carry this thing through, you're about one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand under the estimate we brought back in April, so, feel very pleased with where that sat, so. The second budget, nothing has changed on that, with the exception of Ford Metro. We included a scenario to add in that alternate number one. If the, uh, you so choose to add the security laminated insulated glass to the project.
Council, any questions regarding the, the, the bid packages or the results of the, of the bids? If not, I guess the action that we're seeking from you tonight is to approve the resolution that's in front of you. Uh, I think the, the one other thing that you guys need to make a determination on is whether or not you wanna approve it with the bid alternative, um, or without the bid alternative. As Pete noted, that has just another, what, seventy-three thousand to the, to the contract. Um, I think staff's kinda fifty-fifty on it. Um, I don't know if we have a strong preference. Um, either which way, um, it does add some added protection to, to the windows, um, but it is a seventy-three thousand dollar addition to the, to the project, so. You know, if we had anybody that has some glass experience on the council, maybe they can put us, put into it, so.
But, you know, uh, yeah, Matt, Matt did call, call me. We, we've talked about this, um, actually, the, the glazing, you know, the, with the laminate, you know, is uh, more or less makes it more ballistic. And like, my thought was, you know, we're out in Hutchinson, we're not, I mean, I could see it if they would have it down the cities where they have a lot of uh,
Unrest.
Unrest, yeah.
So, that's fine.
Well, it's fine, yeah. So, you know, and the, the thing, what I told Matt too is that, uh, you know, the, the specialty stuff is when they do, do it the first time around, it's, you know, it's pretty reasonable. But then if you have one break, then the cost is pretty substantial to get that kind of that unit back in there, so. I don't know, I personally, I don't, I think, um, that we could save that money and use it some other place. I agree.
Did Chief Gibson have a preference?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
But you can yell, you can do whatever you want.
Oh, you were hiding behind, you were behind Pete. I didn't see it back there.
Good evening. Um, no, not really. Um, just as Mayor said, you know, it does offer some extra protection. I feel pretty comfortable whatsoever at now. The current police station doesn't have that, um, that type of window. I'm sure the police station before that didn't have that kind of window. Um, you know, the, the design's a little bit different than our current design, uh, for our current PD. So our staff is located in a little different direction, so, I mean, there are some benefits to it, obviously. Um, but it's not ballistic, it's just laminated. So I mean, it's gonna give you a little extra protection if someone throws a brick at the window, but it's not gonna stop a bullet.
Yeah.
So.
Has vandalism at our current station been an issue?
No, no. So, I mean, I'm, you, it's your decision, um, and I'm pretty neutral on one way or the other.
Okay.
Actually, Chief, the only, I think right now, the only bullet resistant glass you have is actually the, in between the dispatcher and the foyer.
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other questions for Pete?
Nope.
So, I would, I would ask the council, in the action that you take, if you approve the resolution, that you either do it with the bid alternative or without it in, in the motion, so.
I'd make a motion to approve it without the bid alternative.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the public alternative. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carried.
So Pete, when do we expect uh, work to begin, so?
Turning the key tomorrow?
Uh, schedule-wise, our first order of business will be to start issuing letters of intent out to these contractors. Right now, the material world and the construction industry is pretty volatile, so, uh, first one out of the gates tomorrow morning is gonna be the steel supplier, uh, the bar joists, the roof structure, and precast both have very long lead times, uh, extremely long lead times. Uh, with that being said, our first uh, mode of operation on site will be to separate the Hutch Liquor Store. Uh, with that being said, we do need some components, uh, going through the process of approval. Uh, we have a water line that needs to come in, the sanitary sewer needs to go out. We have some electrical components, and we're also gonna start off by building the block wall that's gonna separate that before we go ahead and start tearing down the Econo Foods building. At the same time, uh, we'll go ahead and get a process in place, getting the, uh, site secured. Uh, so you'll start to see activity happening here in a couple of weeks, but it always takes a little bit of time, one, to get letter of intent out, draft contracts, make sure we've got the proper insurances from the contractors before we set foot on site, so, uh, that's kinda where things are sitting. Current schedule right now shows that we will start the demolition here sometime in August of the, uh, the Econo Foods, which will give us some time, like I said, to separate the liquor store and do it safely. That being a, uh, operation that needs to stay in business, so.
So what's your best, uh, guesstimate on your timeframe?
Well, it's gonna take the bulk of next year to do it, and I'll tell you what ended up happening in the process. Uh, this building has a large amount of precast, uh, roof, or precast, the wall panels, and at the same time, the entire roof structure is, uh, bar joists, uh, and metal deck. Uh, those two products right now aren't scheduled. The lead time on that is out till the end of January of two thousand twenty-two. So, we are going to uh, do everything we can, uh, ahead of that. Uh, it's unfortunate, we're gonna be in the dead of winter, but we'll figure out a process to make that work. So, those two main components and being around building, the whole key to a building project is getting the building enclosed. So we know we're gonna have, uh, a long haul until we get to that point, which is gonna put us, so, we won't be able to start any further process of the non-bearing walls and the finishes in that building until those things are set, so, uh, that'll take us into February, and then March on, we'll start with the finishes, so, it's gonna gobble up a bulk of, uh, next year to get that building completed.
Thank you.
So, Pete, I don't know, uh, maybe I missed this or, or not, I don't know, but uh, when you, uh, do demolition, is most of that stuff gonna go out to Creekside, or is, did we kinda?
Whatever we, and I know he, Pete has met with Andy out at Creekside. I think whatever can, it's our intentions, but I don't think a lot of that's gonna be able to go out there, so.
Yeah, I had a nice visit with Andy out there, and uh, we did put it in one of the denims. Uh, he wants to make sure that if it does go out, it's clean and acceptable to him, so, uh, a good chunk of that roof structure, I assume that'll go for scrap for the demo contractor. It's all steel, and for sure, whatever we can send out to Creekside, I'm assuming they will take that opportunity to do so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Pete?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks.
Still got five minutes?
Five minutes, uh, let's uh, let's do resolution number one-five-three-two-seven, resolution authorizing free payment and redemption of outstanding bonds. Mr. Reed, how are you tonight?
Yeah, with our bonding process this year, it's, it's quite unique.
Yeah, I did screen that on, so.
As you recall, back in two thousand eighteen, the council committed three million dollars of funds for the community improvement fund towards the police project. And as finance and elders looked at structuring our debt this year with the new police station, we wanted to make sure we were utilizing that three million dollars committed funds in the best way possible for the city. So I'm gonna go through a few slides here. What we determined was, instead of using that full three million to basically buy down the new debt on the police station, would be to use a portion of it to, to pay off existing debt early, and that's what I'll, I'll show you here in these next few slides. So on this first slide, we have four debt issues on the, kind of in the middle of the page, totaling two million five hundred and fifty-five thousand. These are the, the debt issues we'd be looking to pay off here in two thousand twenty-one. Then we'd be looking to pay off that, that two thousand thirteen bond issuance, the remaining nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. We'd be looking to pay that off in two thousand twenty-two. Down at the bottom, you can see our funding sources for the early retirements, just under two million dollars of cash on hand within our debt service funds. And then we'd be looking to utilize about one point five million of that three million that the council had committed to the, to the police station. The interesting component, if you look in, in the red, the interest rates, you can see those fluctuate from two percent to three point six-three percent, quite a bit higher than the interest rates we're gonna be seeing with our, our new debt on the police facility. So that's something to keep in mind as I go through the next few slides here. So, our debt levy over the course of the thirty-year debt on the, on the police facility, with or without refunding this existing debt that, that I'm referring to here, if we refund this exist, existing debt over the next two years, we'd be saving approximately one point seven million of debt levy over the course of the thirty-year police station debt. That's one point seven million of taxes the city taxpayers would not have to pay. So that's one advantage, um, to paying off the debt early. Here's a, here's a graph we look at each year. It's marked up a little differently for tonight, but you'll, you'll recall the red line is our debt target, where we started out at two point two million here. Uh, this year, we worked our way up to two point six million out in the future. With the addition of the new police debt, we're gonna see an immediate jump in our debt levy in year one, twenty twenty-two. We're gonna jump about four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, that, that's evidenced by the purple line at the top. So in the first year, we jump up to about two point six-five million, and then that would climb to a new target out in the out years of about three point one million. So we'd be seeing about a five hundred thousand dollar jump in our, uh, target levy out in year twenty thirty-six. But the area I want you to focus on is in the, the circle here in the early years. That's where the existing debt would be if, if we didn't pay it off, but by paying off that debt early, it allows us to basically stack or, or put more debt on the front end for our police facility, which is evidenced in the yellow bars, so we're, we're putting more of the police debt out in front in the early years where the interest rate's a lot cheaper, which will save us on the back end, um, with, with interest rates higher at the back end of the third-year term. Then we always like to look at our impact on, on the taxpayers with our budgets and tax levies, so I thought it would be useful here tonight as well. So, for two thousand twenty-two, if we didn't add any police debt, the median home value, which for my example here is increasing from a hundred and seventy-five thousand to a hundred and ninety thousand, they would see a fifty-one dollar increase in CD taxes strictly due to the increase in their home value. You can see the tax rate, I'm expecting to decrease by about three percent, but because of the home value increasing, they would see a fifty-one dollar increase, CD taxes. Adding the police debt on the, uh, far right columns, without refunding this debt, we're not doing that tonight. This home number would see an additional seventy-four dollars of CD taxes in that first year strictly attributed to the new PD debt. If we refund this debt, they would only see a sixty-dollar increase, so about fourteen-dollar difference, by refunding the debt to this, uh, fourteen-dollar difference for this tax year. So by using approximately one point five million of that three million that council has committed, using that to pay off the existing debt, will avoid the higher interest rates on the existing debt, will replace it with lower interest rates on the new PD debt, and then that'll help free up some of the tax-lated dollars to help absorb the, the. And then that'll help free up some of the tax-lated dollars to help absorb the, the new debt on the police station, and also minimizing the impact of, of that new police facility debt on the taxpayers. So city staff and elders believe this is the approach, the approach that makes the most sense financially for the city, for its long-term, um, debt management and for the tax levy. So with that said, tonight, the resolution in front of you is asking for your approval to pay off just those four initial debt issuances that I showed you on the first page, the first four totaling two point five-five-five million. So that's what's in the resolution tonight. And then next year, we'll come back asking your approval to, uh, pay off the two thousand thirteen bonds. So with that said, I wonder if any questions you may have?
Andy, just for, for clearly purposes, the, the numbers that you showed of the potential tax impact, that there's still a possibility that may be lower as we work through the budget here, correct?
There's a lot of estimates involved in my, what I showed you tonight. I'm estimating the tax capacity at a seven percent increase. Based on what we've seen with our market value increase over the last year, I, I think seven percent is, is, uh, conservative. Hopefully we see a, a bigger number. And then I'd use a two and a half percent estimate for our general funds, a lot of estimations. And of course, this is comparing, uh, the median home value of one seventy-five to one ninety. Certain homeowners out there may not be seeing as big of a home value increase. And obviously, the impact wouldn't be as large for them. It's all based on everybody's, uh, certain circumstance with their home values.
And if we decide to, to dive into fund balances and stuff like that, what would impact this on?
You know, uh, Nick is gonna touch in the next agenda item on our bonding, but we've split the police bonding into two years, and then that'll give us the benefit to come back next year to finish the bonding, to, to basically bond for the remaining police facility costs. That gives us the flexibility to decide if we wanna kick any more money back into, to buy down the debt. If we have some reserves we've identified, or you've identified and approved you wanna use, we have that flexibility with our next debt issuance to fine tune things. And if there's any unforeseen along the way, that gives us the flexibility to finance for those areas as well next year, so.
Thanks.
Andy, you, you like, uh, interest rates are going to stay flat, or you, you have a?
They're all lower.
Nick, uh, has seemed fairly flat, considering everything else going on with prices and, and, uh, costs of materials. Interest rates have been staying fairly flat and all that, Nick touched on that in the next agenda item. I don't think he's gonna guarantee one percent this year, just because we're going on a little further with the.
All right, any other questions for Andy? Non-entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one, five, three, two, seven.
I will second it.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Chad to approve resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. All right, uh, public hearing, uh, to consider comments and input on stormwater pollution prevention plan for the city of Hutchinson. Mr. Paulson?
If you recall, every year, we provide an annual stormwater update, provides opportunity to the community to provide input and, uh, for us to receive comments related to our stormwater program. Also touch base on some of the activities from twenty twenty and then some of the things moving forward in the future here as well. Um, before I begin, I'd like to introduce to our environmental intern for the summer here, her name's Molly Tretten, uh, local Hutchinson graduate. She's going to UW-McCross for environmental science. It's this young lady sitting off to my left. Thought I'd take that chance to introduce her as well.
We'll ask her a bunch of questions later, so.
Sounds good, she's, she's ready.
Did you tell her there is a cast cap board?
No. Should I? One of the critical components of our MS four program, and MS four, if you recall, is our municipal separate storm sewer system. Has six different ECMs or minimum control measures. Uh, first one being our public education and outreach program includes educating the community on all types of things related to stormwater. Um, that's been dynamic over the years, it's included, uh, primarily things related to no dumping and things like that within our storm sewers in our streets. Um, moving forward into the future, with our future MS four permit, the changes at the state level regarding our city permit, um, it's gonna expand upon other things such as, uh, salt use and, um, how we manage our pets and clean up after our pets and so on and so forth, so. Uh, we continue to evolve that program, uh, as far as what's encailed within our public education and outreach program. We do things, uh, such as a page in the PRC stormwater book, a stormwater webpage on our website. Annually, we do a stormwater brochure, uh, we provide stormwater BMP details distributed to developers and builders as they come in for permits. And then, uh, events like tonight, the annual public meeting amongst other things as well, um, voluntary events and things like that. We use those opportunities to educate the volunteers as well. Uh, in twenty twenty, we still have forty-seven rain barrels. This year, we're definitely higher than that, but, um, we still have a successful rainfall program last year, considering everything else going on in this spring, so.
Say, John?
Yeah?
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Absolutely.
So how many rain barrels are out there? How many have you sold since this program started?
Thousand of them.
Oh, great.
Uh, I'd say probably upwards of ninety-plus percent are within the community. Um, we don't discriminate relative to being a city resident or not. Um, someone just outside of town, they see the information, they call, they want one, um, we have to provide them one for sale as well. So, um, but yeah, we, we're full rider on thousands after this year's sale program, so. But you, you see them all over town, so it's good to see that people are using water for that.
Great, now it's kinda hard this year to use the water. Mine's a little dry.
It's hard to keep them all open wide enough, please.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, we also do, uh, the volunteer programs, the storm grade marker programs, where they go out and put the little decals on top of the storm grades and then signage and educational displays within the community and different things such as a rain guard and so on and so. Uh, another component is our listed discharge detection and elimination program, we call it the IDDB program, is an important component of what we do. Um, that includes, uh, evaluating and understanding of what we have for our system. Where all our BMPs, our ponds, uh, both publicly private are located, our catch basins and manholes and all the storm sewer lines. Um, it allows us then in case of the spill, something like that were to occur, that we can trace it back, not just to the source, but also to our outlets, so that we can get ahead of it in the case of a nasty one and actually prevent it from causing downstream damage within the river basin. Uh, we also have seventy-six outfalls from our community into public waters, uh, that includes the river and the two and three. Stormwater system map, uh, gets updated every year as we add stormwater ponds or add catch basins or pipes within the community. Um, that gets included, it's a requirement of the MS four permit, that we, uh, track any pipe over the size of twelve inches for storm sewer. Uh, so we get that updated every year. And then it's also includes responding to our listed discharge complaints that we receive from not just the public, but also from our staff. Some of the things that we look for, discoloring on pavement, if it's a spill or oil or something along the moat lines, dumping of materials, if that's waste, um, the picture on the bottom right includes some concrete wa- wa- wastewater. And then also too, the worst, the worst, the things that we hate to find is the oil drip pattern next to the catch basin. Those are the things that we receive complaints and, uh, complaints on. And then also too, the more common things too, if it's a neighbor blowing grass into the street, those types of things, um, we also respond to those as well. Uh, more often than not, it's a simple phone call, but then sometimes it gets a little bit more serious, or needs a little bit more clarification or meeting or something, we'll also use letters and mailings associated with the different types of discharges as well. So in addition to our stormwater map updates and the complaints, uh, we have an inspection program where we inspect all of our infrastructure on a rotating cycle. Uh, we conduct staff training, staff training, distributed education with tiers of public on the IDDB program. And then we also provide a stormwater call number in the event that, um, someone sees something out in the community, uh, that's a concern or something that looks out of place. Uh, that is my direct office line, um, I include that on all our public information and educational materials. So if you ever see anything out in the community or have any questions, uh, do not hesitate to give me a call, nothing too small. Um, we'll respond to it in any case, um, and certainly we'll make a determination if it's something serious or if it's something that can just be a conversation that needs to be had with the neighbor or something. Um, construction sites stormwater runoff control is another important part of our program. Uh, it's inspecting our construction sites active, uh, to be able to determine that, um, they're doing everything that they need to as required by the state local, local rules to ensure that their soils and their materials from their construction site aren't running off, off-site, primarily in the events of rain, um, certainly wind blown garbage and debris are things too that we also try to avoid. Um, so dumpsters that aren't covered and things blowing around, um, relative to a construction site are also something that we look at. Um, includes also design reviews, anytime we receive a larger project. Uh, city staff conducts a review to make sure that the plans and the details associated with the project include all the requirements as well. And once again, stormwater call number, um, I pepper that thing on everything we do. Uh, certainly, we wanna make sure that if someone sees something, that they feel comfortable contacting city staff to report that. Some of the common things we see in construction sites, uh, they are, I've noted over the years, they've become less and less common. But certainly, we still see it from time to time, uh, mostly because it's something gotten moved out of place because they had to gain access, they didn't wanna destroy a biolog or an inlet or something. Um, but inlet protection's being missing or not being maintained properly, perimeter, perimeter protection at these maintenance, they have been moved or have been driven over or something. Uh, site name or stockpile's not stabilized and then de-watering sediment laid water without a BMP, um, such as de-watering on the trench excavation after rain. Certainly, we haven't had that problem this summer yet, but, um, yeah, it's something we definitely keep an eye on. And, uh, what was one of the more common ones, uh, fifteen years ago, was sediment tracking on the street as a telltale sign that, um, uh, construction activity was occurring and they weren't taking the proper action to, um, keep their material, their soils on their site. But, um, that has gone away to a large degree recently. Uh, updating our stormwater system app with those new stormwater treatment measures, uh, as I noted earlier, stormwater ponds, uh, both public and private, uh, that's something that we monitor, we actually have long-term stormwater maintenance agreements for every private pond that's constructed within the community. Should a landlord choose not to maintain it, if it lose functionality, um, we're able to actually be able to go in and do the proper maintenance to restore to its functional capacity. And then we're also currently implementing operation and maintenance processes for investment and practices, which includes vegetation maintenance, tract removal, um, assessing for sedimentation accumulation within those basins. Um, so wide ver- wide, wide variety of things that we have to look at from visual inspections to actually go on and build them on and reproduct. One of the key components of our employee training program is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. It is exactly what it sounds like, just being clean in our day-to-day activities and how we do our jobs. Um, it includes staff training, a big component of that is our street sweeping program. Uh, street sweeping, uh, being able to remove that material before it enters a pipe is a lot more cost effective to do that. Not only that, but it also returns a great, uh, cost benefit for, um, the effectiveness of the actual treatment, removal of, uh, contaminants in our system before they get into a river or a lake. Leaf pickup program's also a component of that, the difference between the two, the street sweeping programs primarily targeting sand and silts and those types of things that accumulate over the winter during the summer months. Whereas the leaf pickup program really targets organic, if you can imagine, that's exactly what it is. It's leaf litter and those types of things, and as they break down, they produce nutrients that, um, cause algal movement and things like that within our local waters. So a leaf pickup program is a, a great addition to the street sweeping program for the removal of, of pollutinfectiveness. Um, inspections completed in twenty twenty included nineteen of our fifty-six ponds were inspected, and then thirty-four of our seventy-six outfalls that I noted earlier, um, were required to inspect them at least once every five years. We're way ahead of the curve on that, we, uh, take the time to actually inspect them more frequently than we're required to, just to ensure that those are working to the, um, best that they are able to. And then we also conduct follow-up inspections as repairs to infrastructure are made, um, just to make sure that, um, it's done. Uh, if it's done by a contractor, city staff, we need to document any of those maintenance activities that we complete. Additional information of our stormwater program, local resource for answering stormwater questions. Um, we serve as kind of a point source for people that are interested in all kinds of things relative to stormwater. If that's, uh, BMPs or selection of certain types of best management practices. It also includes things relative to shoreline restorations and, um, as we get more into lakes and river basin improvements here in the coming years, um, I'm sure we'll engage more and more and more with private property owners regarding what they can do on their property and if there's ways that the city or the soil water conservation district can help make that happen. Um, we're also a member of the Minnesota City Stormwater Coalition, or an advocate organization that works with, I believe, over a hundred and fifty different cities within the state of Minnesota. Um, they're basically ran as part of the League of Minnesota Cities. That program and that, I guess, that, that coalition, um, works really good in advocating for cities' rights relative to, um, the requirements associated with the MS four program and then everything that happens from a, uh, year-to-year basis within all of those component, components of our MS four program. Uh, recently, our MS four permit was reissued. Uh, that reissuance, uh, occurred here earlier this year. It doesn't go into effect until the city's, the city's stormwater pollution prevention program is public notice. That should be coming soon. Um, they go through the MS four general permit, means they issue a permit for everybody and then each individual community, um, college, anyone who's in MS four, um, basically has to fill out the stormwater pollution prevention plan checklist, provide that information to the state, um, they started public noticing some of those, so that should be coming here pretty quickly. Um, I would anticipate sometime in July that our program will be public noticed. Um, and then at that time, if, yeah, certainly people have questions or would like to view that, uh, they can get that at city hall once that goes under the public notice pro- process. Reporting on progress for the city to meet TMBLs, I know we've talked about TMBLs briefly in the past. That's a new requirement since we didn't have approved TMBL prior to this permit. Um, so we'll be working on that. Uh, city is meeting our TSS, our total suspended solid waste load allocations for the three different TMBLs. I know that's a whole, that's a mouthful, um, so I won't go into great depth of detail explaining what that means. But, um, we've been doing lots of good things over the last years regarding their sweeping, their bonding. I think the city of Hutchinson's ahead of the curve as far as how we operate. Uh, having funding allocated and dedicated specifically to stormwater improvements is a great testament to the fact that, that's why we're meeting those TSS waste load allocations for those TMBLs. Uh, bacteria TMBL is also part of that, MS four requirements will address that through education and outreach. That's primarily related to pet waste, um, and then other areas of concentrated animals. I'm one of those that concerned that, um, we're gonna probably start conversations with Gopher Camp Fire. That's obviously an area where we concentrate animals too, so we'll work with them as well to identify opportunities regarding education, extension, science, improvements and other things like that down at that site. Chloride is a common one within the metro, salt use. As you can imagine, a teaspoon of salt will contaminate an entire five gallon bucket of water. So it doesn't take a lot of salt to contaminate a lot of water. Um, one of the things relative to that is education and outreach relative to, um, contractors that apply salt, also to, uh, large, big box stores or areas that have large parking lots, um, to help educate them and understand the impacts of salt use and then proper salt use as well. And then also coming soon is our Hutchinson MS four public notice by the MPCAs, so we're looking forward to it. Um, once we get over that hump, we'll have five more years of relative, uh, permit bliss, so, um, we'll keep moving forward on that front.
John really looking forward to that.
Yeah, great stuff, so. Um, we also have ongoing pond cleanup projects, um, periodically, we have to do maintenance on our ponds. Uh, so we'll be having more of that here in twenty twenty-one, we did stop that in twenty twenty, we're moving ahead with our maintenance of our system. I touched on lake river basin nutrients. Um, also, we're looking at trading analysis relative to our, uh, wastewater treatment facility. We're gonna have a tighter phosphorus limit at a wastewater plant in the coming permit. Um, so one of the options to potentially offset large capital improvements at that facility is looking at other alternatives, if there's opportunities for trading, uh, more cost-effective BMPs, um, within the watershed that we can potentially curb some of those future capital topsies, wastewater plant, just doing some trade by doing stormwater improvement. Um, ongoing MS four activities, permanent reissuance in twenty twenty-one, core education. Um, also worth noting is the tighter redevelopment stormwater standards, one thing we, uh, we're realizing is part of the police station and then also the Jefferson Street extension is anticipation of those new requirements regarding redevelopment. Um, pri- or currently, the current requirements say that if you redevelop a property, if it's two acres and it's, uh, gonna be two point two acres of impervious hard surface at the end of it, you only have to treat for the point two additional acres. The new standards say that if you're redeveloping two acres and it ends up being two point two acres in the end, you need to provide treatment for the entire two point two acres. Little different for linear projects, we won't have, we'll have to treat half as much of the water because with linear projects, as you can imagine, if we're redeveloping or completely reconstructing a road, a Fifth Avenue or something along those lines, now we have to provide treatment for all of that water that's generated off that roadway. So it's logistical, it's a logistical challenge to be able to do that if you don't have any right of way, don't have any ability to be able to put a pond or those types of BMPs, uh, within the project. So it's definitely a challenge and certainly we'll continue to work forward. The PCA has provided some different tools and resources available to communities, uh, that. communities that give us some flexibility as far as how we accomplish that and potentially doing a regional pond somewhere else and then using that to generate credits for future projects. So we have some flexibility there, but yeah, that's a, that is definitely a nuanced thing that we'll have to keep an eye on relative to future development redevelopment. And then also seeking a value of funding sources for the basement sediment management options. How we move forward with the actual lakes and river basins improvement could potentially affect our MS four program, how we prioritize removing deltas, how we go about trying to improve water quality. You need a lot of different things. So we'll be working with local partners here over the next coming years to really fine tune that and continue to improve on minimizing our impact on our water quality in the area. What I got? If there's any questions that you have to answer, maybe.
So John, you talk about MS four permits. Not every city is required to have an MS four permit. Why is Hutchinson?
Hutchinson's over ten thousand people population. The threshold for an MS four from the city's standpoint is ten thousand or larger. If your five thousand people are larger, you can discharge directly to impaired water. You also receive MS four designation. So that ebbs and flows to sometimes a community, they have a smaller community like Gunco. They may not have had one if, if the creek down there wasn't impaired. If the creek wasn't impaired, Gunco wouldn't be in an MS four. But because they discharge directly to it, they have to comply with all MS four requirements as well.
I think that's important though, because a lot of things we get mainly from contractors who say, a lot of people do this in that city or this other city. Well, they bear well maybe because they don't have an MS four permit like the city of Hutchinson's required to have.
Correct. And it's also kind of challenging too is that state requires a construction stormwater permit for disturbance of any project over a acre. The requirements in that state construction stormwater permit aren't even the same as the MS four permit requirements, where the state requires MS four to implement treatment standards. It's different. They don't even align on that level. So just because they're doing it in brown doesn't necessarily mean that they don't have any requirements, but they might not even be the same as what we require here. So yeah, it can be difficult to convey that information to folks relative when they start asking questions like that, like, why don't I have to do that here? Why didn't I have to do that there? Even in Hutchinson, why didn't I have to do that in Hutchinson two years ago and now I have to meet treatment requirements for the entire area redeveloped for purpose? So those changes involved too. So that's definitely a challenge, but yeah, we certainly have to continue to evolve with that requirement.
Thanks, John.
We tried to help you out. You know, Mary mentions it too. I, you know, in the wintertime, I'm always talking about adopt fire hydrant and keep those clear. And I know Mary's brought it up too and I have to about adopting a drain, just to keep them clear because, you know, what I found out is that it's better to clean them out when it's not raining. Because it always seems like somebody will drive by and splash you.
They try to get it opened up. They drive through it really fast. Maybe the wave will knock the debris out of it or something.
Yeah, it's kind of, you would think they would see you standing there trying to clean it all up.
No, or it's probably some big problem.
And it's in along those lines. I think that's a great point. There is a, there is a program in the metro where they actually have an adopt drainage program. It's a buy-in type of thing where someone else actually manages the program, the software. Basically, you send them all the GIS data for all our sketch basins. And then people can say, oh, I live here. They can pull up the map and they can click on it. Oh, it's already adopted. Oh, I gotta find another one nearby if they want to do that. So there are programs like that. They've been developed in the metro, but that's something too certainly we can take a look at. There are others. People do it already, like you said, Gary. It never fails that I see that happening around town too. And certainly the city appreciates that. But really, in the end, those types of issues, something like that is partially plugged. It's going to impact the local homeowner first or the, the local commuter, traveler you know, on those local localized streets. So I mean, if you can keep those clean by all means, but yeah, periodically during the summer, once, at least probably once a month, we get around to every city street within the community and sweep them. So that helps. But yeah, it's in between that can be a challenge. Certainly, yeah, people are, so if you're compelled to remove the debris that accumulates on those, feel free to do so. Otherwise, if it's something big or something nasty that you see, once again, feel free to give me a call as well.
Any other questions for John? Otherwise, we'll open it up to the public comment.
Can we open the poll to the public?
Can the motion be closed in the public area?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chad, seconded by Mary to approve public hearing. Any other discussion? Not call a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.
That's it?
That's it.
Who is the one?
My gosh.
No.
Thanks, John.
Well, I couldn't ask her how many brains are in her because you did. Thank you, Sean. I agree. We'll move down to number eleven, resolution number one five three two eight, resolution approving for the issuance and sale of general aviation bonds series twenty-one eighty and proposed a grand principal amount of fourteen million three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's a big number this year. Mayor fourteen million three hundred and ten is the current estimated R value. Kind of a unique year with the police facility that we're bonding for in addition to a project out at the wastewater plant, the Edward's project. And then just with our typical special assessment improvement bonds over by we're doing those streets over by the Linden Park and then also the First Avenue reconstruction or overlay or reclaim, I guess. And then we have so another, one more unique aspect to the bond issuance this year with some tax abatement bonds, which are addressing a couple of projects that don't have any assessments associated with them. So unfortunately, we couldn't use the special assessment. Improvement bonds that we typically utilize every year. And those two projects are the pedestrian crossing system on Highway seven in Montana Street and then some improvements, a sidewalk and trail improvements on Highway seven east. And then the Jefferson Street extension that basically goes from Washington Avenue to First Avenue north or, oh yeah, First Avenue north. So those are the projects we're looking to finance with this bond offering. And this is the first step in the process. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Nick Amhut. Nick is with Ellers, our financial advisor. He'll go through the pre-sale report that's in the packet and then between him and I will be available for questions at the conclusion.
Thank you, Mary and council. A lot of smiles on the dial. I did bring my crystal ball.
All right, screen that one up.
The proposed issue is bundling together a variety of different projects this year. Andy and I have certainly been trading some messaging and conversations for the better part of half a year to try to figure out how we're going to bundle all this together. But the bottom line is these bonds will be offered all together in one package, kind of similar to what you just heard as far as the police facility and all the owners coming together. This is the opposite. We're going to put all of these different components together into one offering document and put that out to the marketplace for bids to be presented to you for award at your second meeting next month in July. The proposed amount is fourteen point three million dollars. That is to fund all of the different components that Andy just mentioned, but I'll break those apart and talk about the potential repayment of each of those. So we are anticipating two million dollars approximately to finance the improvement bonds. These are the bonds backed by assessments or street surface improvements. That debt will be repaid from a combination of special assessments from the benefiting property owners over a period of ten years and then a dedicated tax levy over a period of fifteen years. This is in concert with your typical annual bond issuance for these types of projects and provides you that predictable levy going forward that Andy mentioned in a previous discussion point. There's six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the abatement portion. That also will be a dedicated tax levy over a fifteen-year period. So they will actually look identical to you in terms of your long-range plans. We'll structure those two components together. About four million dollars for wastewater improvements. This portion of the debt will be paid specifically from wastewater utility revenues over a ten-year term, starting with twenty-two as far as the budget year. And then the balance, seven and a half million dollars will be the first tranche is the, is the term we use in the finance world, the first component of the police facility financing. So roughly, you know, just over half that we'll be bonding for this year. Again, we're structuring that repayment over a thirty-year term, but we're front-loading a lot of that repayment in, to eat up some of that freed up capacity from prepaying the existing bonds that Andy mentioned in the previous agenda item. That's going to allow us essentially to accelerate about one point nine million dollars of principal retirement right away so that that's off the books right away and not accruing interest over that thirty-year term. So that provides that savings that Andy mentioned, about one point seven is what we're anticipating, the overall savings versus using that as cash and borrowing less but still having to, to back end load it like we would in a typical thirty-year amortization. But that tax impact will start in the year twenty twenty-two. We'll anticipate that we're going to balance for the remainder amount of the police facility debt during the course of that year. As you approach the later stages of construction, we have a better feel for what the total project cost is and can have some discussions with Andy about, again, prepaying some other bonds that are outstanding and potentially saving some more money in the long term. So I think that flexibility will be very beneficial and we've, we've discussed this quite a bit and independently, both of us came to the kind of the same conclusion. So all in all, we think that packaging all this together over a thirty-year term, we're looking at where rates are at today, adding just a little bit for flexibility over the course of the next month. We're thinking about a two point two interest rate on this thirty-year financing, which is extremely low in terms of the broader scheme of things. Certainly, historically, city has borrowed, you know, over a five-year term and gotten two point two percent interest. So this is a favorable time in the marketplace as far as interest rates are concerned. We certainly want to lock in a significant amount of the police debt right now, but we do think that that flexibility in the future will be important to be able to determine what is the appropriate amount of bonding that you have outstanding for that facility. I should mention one other item, a reason that we do want to split those two apart is something we've talked about in the past. The city has a ten million dollar cap on what's called bank qualified bond status. This is set by the IRS. If you issue less than ten million dollars in tax exempt debt in a year, you're able to designate those bonds as bank qualified. And that just essentially means that banks can purchase these bonds and receive some benefit of the tax exemption that they otherwise would not be able to do. We're over ten million dollars in this year because we understand rates are extremely low. We don't think that differential is very big, but, but we're anticipating that next year, for the other half of the police facility debt, we will be able to designate those as bank qualified. And that will allow us to also save some additional costs. So we're saving on interest by doing that as well. So I feel like that, we didn't address that in the refunding component, but that is also part of the reasoning why we want to split these two apart into different years. But with that said, we are going to package these all together with the lead of Andy. We'll help in obtaining a credit rating from Standard and Poor's on the bonds. You know, they certainly will look at the city's financial health and evaluate that rating and apply it to these bonds and we'll take that to the market in time for your second meeting in July in hopes that we have some very favorable results to present for you for a formal award. Be happy to address any of the council's questions on, on the rates that we anticipate or the crystal ball or any of the other components. But you know, this is a favorable time in the marketplace and we do think that we are anticipating a good result for the city.
I want to thank both you and Andy for, I think, recognizing some cost savings worth, paying off some debt. And, you know, I don't think, I don't think I've ever brought forth a debt issuance of fourteen million dollars. But, you know, when we look at where we're at in the market, this is probably the best time, if the city's ever going to borrow a significant amount of money to do it. And so I think the plans that we put in place is probably the most fiscally responsible way to do so as a, as a city if we're looking to borrow this amount of money.
Did you miss your drive out to Hutchinson? You know, it's been a lot of virtual meetings last year.
Wonderful afternoon. The sky was clear. Not too much traffic.
Perfect.
It's great to be here.
Any other questions for Nick? Just entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay.
Let Dave.
You got it.
Which one are you on it?
Let's put the coin.
Motion by Chad, seconded by myself to approve resolution number one five three two eight. Any other discussion? Not call a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Nick, Andy, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
See you again in a month.
Thanks.
You ready?
Moving on, the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash eight two three, ordinance to rezone property at one twenty-six and one thirty-five Franklin Street Northwest from C three Central Commercial District to mix to MD, MDXD, mixed-use district as requested by City of Hutchinson and property owner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me one second. I'd like to pull up a couple of graphics here on the screen. I'll find the right spot. Okay, so as you noted at the planning commission meeting last Tuesday night, the planning commission looked at a couple of rezoning applications. They are found on this map here. We have one twenty-six Franklin Street and then one thirty-five. One twenty-six is a former medical center building that the city bought and demolished because it was lighted several years ago. And then also the Franklin House, former cloud treatment home that the city recently acquired as well. Both of these properties were identified within our downtown plan in Action Hutchinson for potential for redevelopment. Miles has been working with the developer that is looking at a project here. And one of the first steps of that is what we call sketch plan. That's basically looking at general concept of the development. It's the step before a detailed site plan and then also just rezoning the property. So what we're looking at is rezoning these from Central Commercial, our downtown district, to mixed use, which allows residential in essence. The downtown district, allowing residential above existing stores downtown. So with that, staff is recommending that moving forward with the rezonings. This is just a general idea of what a project might look like in those areas. Obviously, that's Franklin, one thirty-five Franklin, the former group home is a smaller site, so it might be like four units across the front of a brownstone or a townhome looking thing with walk-up steps in front and a tuck under garage in the back. And then similarly, on the other medical center site, something similar. We're also awaiting a FEMA grant potentially for some area to the west of the medical center site that would allow for potentially some ponding or open space to be part of the development as well. So like I said, staff recommends approval. The planning commission also recommended approval of these rezonings. This is the first reading this evening of this, far as two readings were going to change. And at that point, I guess if you open any questions, you may ask.
I think it's a good use of that property. You know, both those places would be really nice. I think it's nice to have some visibility of our downtown and it less than the Imagine Hutchinson plans. You know, I mean, when you look at that... I mean, when you look at that, it will bring people downtown, they will live there, they will walk, they will go to the stores, they will frequent what we have in our city. And it's a good fit.
Yeah, what the thoughts of downtown development is, is we need uh people living close to downtown that are going to frequent the downtown, so the the more housing and the more higher density housing and nice housing that's downtown allows the downtown itself to be successful with obviously those folks frequenting their businesses and and different uh amenities downtown. Any other questions? Again, these are preliminary grounds. We'll we'll be back with a, as this evolves with more detailed to the actual site plan and more detailed about ramp construction. This is just step one to start the communication with the developer.
So they're they're thinking of having the first floor parking, correct, is the the way it looks, right?
Yeah, I mean, well, in order to make it efficient, there's just not enough space to to space it out, so you have to go up. You can notice it's it's three stories, um, which, you know, there's not a lot of buildings downtown that are three stories, but um, we think that this is something that could work in and being an amenity down there in that area that's been under U.S. for quite some time now. And again, there's a whole process for the rest of this to go through in terms of working with the DNR, public hearing notices to the to the labor and properties, they were notified of this as well, the rezoning, but again, this is just the first of many steps to make a project happen.
You got any questions, Greg, and Miles?
I think I'm also due to approve the first reading of the ordinance. I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie? Uh, higher rating.
Oh, no place to end.
First reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash eight-two-four. An ordinance amending section one-fifty-four point zero-six-three of the city code regarding conditional permitting use in C-three Central Commercial zoning district.
As you saw in your packet, I included a staff report that was put into the planning commission relative to a proposed zoning ordinance amendment in our downtown district. And a little of the background there is uh, obviously, there's been several kind of big box stores downtown. Uh, the ones, the Econno Foods, obviously, that's that they did for many years and the city is now, as you heard earlier, in the process of building the new police department there. And then now the Shopple facility has been city vacated now for about two and a half years. And the other one I didn't put on here that was a larger square foot footprint that the city also ended up buying out, that wasn't a big box store, but the old medical clinic was also a larger square foot building that the city also um stepped in and assisted with that lighting and roof. So, over the last couple of years, obviously, Shopple was for sale. From my understanding, talking to the folks with Shopple and then the company that ultimately was a real real estate agent for that building, they did not get really any interest advertising that facility for reuse as a retail-type building. Uh, as you probably know, a big box retail in general has declined. You've got Walmart and Target and a few others, but in general, there's a lot less than there used to be. Used to have A-Mart, Shopple, or might have, you name it, um, department stores that have one other business. So generally speaking, uh, within the United States, there's more big box stores out there than there's demand to build those stores. So one of the buzzwords in urban planning is adaptive reuse and that's how can you reuse these buildings? Turn them into something else productive for your community. So, um, recently, the Shopple building then went on auction and during that process, I got phone calls from all over the country from people looking at what they could do with this building. And nobody talked about big box retail as an option. And previously, being in Hutchinson here, I was a consultant, worked all over the Midwest of this country with downtown planning. And really, big box stores in downtown settings are just not something that you see these days. If there happened to be a Target maybe that works out, some of these one-offs like Shopple, A-Mart and such are are they're they're not a business anymore. So, in essence, um, people had a couple of different things they were interested in doing with the Shopple building. One was storage, like a cube storage, um, you see these in the Twin Cities, a higher-end secure storage facility. To me, that was not a great use because it doesn't really create a lot of jobs, you know. You have storage probably outside as well. Some of the folks I go wanting to do both not re-storage along with that in the parking lot. My thought was is that didn't really fit in with character of downtown district. Uh, the other thing, uh, we had people looking at it for was what I call light manufacturing or high-tech manufacturing that as manufacturing, you really don't notice that it's manufacturing from the outside. It's happening on the inside, you have trucks coming and going, loading docks and boys coming and going, but not a lot of uh, what I'd call traditional smokestack manufacturing noise, dust, debris, things like that. There was uh some folks interested in that. And um, it ended up that the building was sold on an auction to a broker. And that broker had approached the city about, you know, options, so staff talked about it, met with the EDA. And we decided that we thought it was in the best interest of the city to look at amending that ordinance to allow light manufacturing as a conditional use permit downtown. So again, it would be a conditionally permitted use, it would be something that wouldn't be along by right. We would have some control on the type of business that could go in to make sure it was compatible with the surrounding uses. Really, um, one of the guys summed it up pretty good that I talked to that does development all over the country. He said, the cities that don't react and are aren't flexible are gonna be stuck with buildings that are gonna be vacant and be lighted that you'll have to deal with. And the council knows the difficulty we had with developing Econno Foods, even the medical center site sat vacant for many years without any interest. Typically, if you have a really good site that people wanna do a, let's say, a housing redevelopment or a mixed-use retail housing development, you know, their developers seeking those out. We're not getting requests for those in Hutchinson. If you're in Excelsior or Menetown or Euphrary or somewhere in the cities and you had a site like this, you know, maybe we would be looking at turning it into a light industrial or light manufacturing use because there's more demand for higher-end housing there, but in Hutchinson here, we just didn't get interest from that. So, uh, with that, uh, we went from the planning commission last Tuesday night with this. There was a very good discussion at the planning commission about kind of the pros and cons about uh the the reuse of that property. And it ended up being that uh it was a three-two vote to move forward with uh amending the ordinance. Uh, the folks that kind of were on the side of amending the ordinance kind of thought that the private sector, two and a half years trying to market this building, it hasn't went anywhere. In general, big box retail is kind of a thing of the past. You know, they thought it wasn't, you know, they stuck with another building, city vacant for how many years that began ends up having to be a something that the city builds out in the end. And then there was also a couple of folks that wanted to keep more of the the character of the existence downtown as well. I believe you've got a hand out in front of you uh from from a resident that also talked about um some of the reasons why keeping it retail would be beneficial and how that fits in with some of the cities uh downtown signs and such as well. So I I went on for a while here, um, we do an opportunity to ask any questions. I know there was a question at the beginning from uh one of the, from Morgan through Gary, um, some of the questions that she had as well, I can maybe maybe once the council's done answering questions.
So Dan, I know we've talked about one site, but this is essentially for the entire downtown district.
Yes.
Obviously, we've got a request that's coming from from a site that's in town, like this would have an impact on the entire downtown.
And that's a good clarification, you know, the emphasis of this really was the Shopple site. However, um, this would be relative to the whole downtown, for the most part, I don't think there's a lot of businesses that are buildings, I can say that businesses, buildings that would be sufficient to have this type of use, there may be a few others. But in general, I don't see that as being like our whole downtown is going to be taken over by light manufacturing. Just because you need to have the right building and just coincidentally, this Shopple building happened to work. If you look at most of the other buildings downtown, there does not conducive to that type of manufacturing facility. Um, and the other thing I would note is that if we were to get a bunch of requests to turn other buildings into this and we didn't feel like they were the right request, you may also amend the ordinance, you know, back and take out this you know, light manufacturing of that conditionally permitted use.
Can maybe test our conditionally use permit, what that means for somebody would be?
So, you know, we have two different types of uses, you have permitted uses and that's a general reach out, so if you don't need a building permit or a sign permit anything, you can just go buy a building and put your business in there and really don't have to deal with us at all at finding these only building. Does the additional use permit, basically what that means is that the use is conditionally permitted as long as it fits the character of the neighborhood and doesn't have any negative impacts to the surrounding area. And then we can put conditions on that mitigate any potential negative impact. So, for instance, we might limit parking, um, you know, times, uh, we might limit uh hours of operation, we might limit noise, you know, those sorts of things that mitigate the negative effects. And really, with the condition of use permit, we had a lot of control because we know what the request is and we can put conditions to limit what somebody might do.
So we have that, right, so if someone, I mean, obviously, if it's within the realm of, you know, there's certain rules of conditionless permit, but essentially, if somebody says, I wanna build this here or operate this here, we say, yes, you can under these conditions. And they say, well, I can't meet those conditions. And then essentially, they're left with having to find a different location.
Yeah, then they have to find a different location. Exactly, and you know, one of the trends of, I went to a conference a few years ago and it was about the city of Minneapolis. How over the years, they had a lot of little neighborhood clusters where there was industry. And what they found is, is, you know, the people that lived in the city worked at these little manufacturing places, they're small, you know, tool and die shops or whatever. Well, as the city started to redevelop, a lot of the uses were pushed out. And what the city found is is that was detrimental to them to them. And now they're trying to get these industry clusters back in specific spaces of the neighborhood. And again, that's, Minneapolis is different than us, you know, it's more of a, when I say a traditional city where mixes inter- interclining together. It's not, like here, we have a lot of industrial park and our central commercial downtown and then our fringe commercial out at the mall. But in in bigger cities, things mix together more. And I don't see an issue with the mixing of of light industrial use to the rest of downtown. If you look at what downtown was back a hundred years ago, we had a blacksmith shop. You had a maybe car dealership and you had somebody else making, who knows what, it was mixed use. And then we got away from that, now the trend is to get back to mixed uses. Somewhere, we just looked at what their requests for the housing of rezonations.
Well, Mary, I don't wanna date ourselves, but uh remember that Shopple, there used to be a actually a dealer down there, remember that?
Yep, mm-hmm, well, there used to be a craft building there at one time, cold storage, I mean, that was big.
Yeah, and I think we need to be careful and this is, you know, we don't do this lightly. We wanna make sure that what we do is going to fit, we don't wanna do something that's detrimental to downtown. We had a scrapyard by the depot, you know, that we obviously, you know, we don't, that's not what we're looking for here. We're looking at what I call light high-tech manufacturing that people are making things and from the outside, you have no idea, it's a nice-looking clean building. You know, there's parking out front, you've got employees that go to the rest of the downtown to shop. Realistically, if there was other options and somebody said, hey, I've got a couple million bucks and I'm gonna put it into a housing redevelopment or a mixed-use retail center, that would be great, but we're not seeing that type of demand or interest in either with the real estate community that has uh tried to sell this project for the last two months.
I would wager that the potential tenant of the Shopple building will make the building look better than it currently does 'cause if you look at their current building, you can probably eat off the floor in there. So, um, like, it's been said, but like, this isn't maybe like a fantasy reuse of it, but I think it's a good reuse. It definitely beats having a um building falling on itself and we've struggled obviously to redevelop several sites adjacent to downtown and I don't think this is a bad reuse, you know, it's not maybe what everybody would ideally want, but it's it's a good reuse and um, the potential tenant's been a great corporate citizen of our community and I think we should do what we can to support them.
And I agree with that a hundred percent. I have also driven by and looked at their other facility and it's stellar. You know, they've been in the community a long time, home homegrown, I mean, I think it's a win. It's not like you're gonna have five semis rolling in and out of there every day either. You know, that's that's not gonna be part of it. I even come to the cars in their parking lot, you know, envisioned it, what it would look like and it it will be fine.
Well, this building is set up for, you know, when it was Shopple, I mean, they got semis in there all the time, so I mean, I don't know if they actually use semis to ship stuff or not, or is it mostly UPS or?
Mostly UPS and FedEx.
Yeah, so there probably won't be that much truck truck traffic either and no forkless running around outside with no rats outside, so. I think this would be a real good use, like you said, Chad, Mary, you you drive by their building now and it's it's always clean.
Absolutely.
I think this is a great, great use of this building.
I just wanna obviously reiterate too, this is, you know, obviously, we've got this request because of one building, but we have to remember this is impacting the entire downtown. Um, but I think, you know, some of those conditional use requests is what, you know, really helps govern the potential amount or what type of use would be be in the downtown area.
I think, like I said earlier, there's only so many buildings downtown that we have that are are conducive to this, you know, obviously, someone could build a new building per se, you know, that would be fine. Really, the downtown is about the form of the buildings more than it is what you do in the buildings, in my opinion. And that's actually what a lot of cities are doing, they're zoning now, they're not zoning for the use, they're zoning for how the building looks. So you have the look of a downtown, but it might be an apartment, it might be a medical building, it might be a retail store, it might be an industrial place. And I think that's the key here is that, you know, most folks that want to do light industrial, need a building similar to this. There's only a couple of them that I can think of that would even be remotely close for light manufacturing that exists today.
Well, like you said, it, you know, I I remember when I was on the fire department, we're talking about putting a substation in, you know. And you go out to some of these other communities and the fire station almost looked like a regular residential house even. So it fits, you know, like you said, it just fits in, so.
Morgan, did we answer your question?
I think so. I I, like I said, I love the idea of who's gonna go in there, I'm just worried that it's, you know, that could stretch too far, so.
Sure. Can I make some comments or not?
Uh, no, we're gonna, we did get your letter, Tom, and and we'll take it under advisement and uh this is the first reading, so we'll revisit this again next meeting, correct, Dan?
Yeah, if if you so choose to move forward, it'll be out in the chat for next meeting.
Freddie, any other questions for Dan or Miles? And entertain a motion?
I think I'm motion to approve the reading of the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the first reading. Any other discussion?
Well, just to address with Morgan saying, I know machinists love pottery, so they'll probably just
We'll be great neighbors.
Yeah, no, the gold coin opening on that block, it's gonna be a pretty hot area, so.
I like they drink coffee too, so. Carrie, call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie? Uh, there is a resolution number one-five-three-two-three. Resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for first avenue northeast improvement in Jefferson Street Extension Project. Lead number ten, project number twenty-one dash ten.
and twenty-one dash eleven.
Kent actually wasn't able to make it tonight and Joe and I didn't have our conversation prior to the meeting, so I think he's going to address it, but I can assist if need be, so.
Good evening again, council, Mr. Mayor. We received open bids here just last week for lettings number twenty-one ten and twenty-one eleven. The estimate for the project was a four percent higher than the lowest bid that was received. fullest bid came from R and R Excavating in Hutchinson here. So it was a very competitive bidding process. It was a great result from what we saw, close to the estimate. Obviously, with everything that's been going on, the things we've been hearing, we're worried regarding labor and materials and so on and so forth, but we received a very good bid relative to everything that's happening around us. So we're very pleased in that way. Otherwise, the project, if you're aware, includes the extension of Jefferson and also the reconstruction and replacement of First Avenue adjacent to the police department. Included in the packet was a resolution and then also the bid tabulation itself. I don't know if that was updated or not. Like I said, we just opened the bids after the council packet deadline. So I certainly, I have some extra copies here if you'd like me to.
They're on the tables.
Okay, great. Otherwise, if you have any questions relative to the project or the bid itself, it is also regrouping too that we'll have the assessment hearing for the project, the first meeting in July. But we're looking to expedite this. The project would plan to move forward right after the Fourth of July relative to the phasing so that we could get in there and get out of there. The first phase of the project would include a little step just north of Second Avenue to, or actually Washington, sorry, just north of Washington to address access, ingress, egress for the liquor store. So we would want to make sure that that's maintained. We'd get in there, the first two weeks would be phase one to get that opened up so that we can maintain access to the liquor store. And then once that's in place and built, then we can move forward with the subsequent stages of the project to the north of that extension, First Avenue. With that, under any questions you may have?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Second?
Motion by Chad, second by Gail to approve resolution number one-five-three-two-three. Any other discussion? All motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Moving, we have resolution number one-five-three-five. Resolution accepting resolution and declaring council vacancy.
Mayor and council, obviously, we had begun discussion on this item at our last council meeting. There was a couple of questions that were raised that we were able to clarify. And so I just want to touch on those briefly. I know one question that was brought up was about voting for a council vacancy. And in particular, with Brandon leaving, could he take part in that vote? And state law does not allow a resigning member of a city council to participate in the vote of a council person that's basically going to be replacing them. So we answered that question. And then second, regarding election dates, we had that clarified between November second and February eighth. Was the dates that were given from the state auditor, the county confirmed that since we have a primary function as a part of our election, we have to move forward with the assumption that we're going to have a primary. And so that would be November second. Now, if only two people file for office and we don't need to have a primary, that's great, but we can't move up the general election to November. That has to take place in February. So I think the easiest way to look at this is that the election to fill the council vacancy will take place on February eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Now, as history has shown, most likely we'll have a primary in November, but it's very possible that we may not have a primary. And so obviously, the process that we need to do to move forward is first to officially accept Brandon's resignation and to declare a vacancy. And that's what the resolution that's in front of you tonight, that's essentially what that does. And then the next phase is really to determine how are you going to fill that position on an interim basis? And so that essentially means from when Brandon resigns on the, I think his last day will be the fifteenth of July, will be a vacancy effective July sixteenth. So you're going to have a period of time from July sixteenth to February eighth that somebody's going to have to fill that vacant role until you can have that election. So like I said, that's kind of that two-step process. You're going to have to fill the vacancy and then have a special election to formally, I guess, fill out the rest of Brandon's term. So I think the first action for you tonight is to take part in the adoption of the resolution, to formally accept that and declare a vacancy. And then after that resolution is passed, I guess staff is seeking direction from the council on how you want to go about filling that position on an interim basis. You know, we had, staff has adjusted and we talked about this at our last meeting and that was the general, I guess, feedback that we got from the council was they liked the idea of an interest form to be filled out. And so if that's your desire, I guess that's the direction you need to give to staff. We included a sample form. If you'd like to see anything added to it, we need to have that information. And you should set some dates and some deadlines. And so maybe before we get too far down, I would ask the council to consider at least action on the resolution, unless you had any questions for me.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution and accept his resignation.
Second? Motion by Chad, second by myself to accept resignation and declare council vacancy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Like I said, and then the next thing is we need direction from the council on, I guess, the route you want to go to fill that position on an interim basis. Like I said, we included a sample form. I threw out a date of if you were to go the route of, of, you know, requesting interest forms to be filled out, that you maybe set a deadline for July ninth, which is a Friday. And then at that first meeting in July, the July thirteenth, you could obviously see what you receive for interest forms and determine what your next step would be, whether that's, you want to interview the candidates or whatever. Because that's what staff threw out as a recommendation, but obviously, it's up to the four or five of you to determine what process you want to use to fill that on an interim basis.
I guess I'm more leaning more towards the interest form. I have had some people come and ask about it and so I know there is some interest out there. So that would be my suggestion.
That would be my take on it too. I'd like to see an interest form and at least we can kind of look who's all, will come forward to fill the vacancy.
Sounds good to me.
Dave?
Agreed.
So the form that we've included in your packet, is that sufficient? Is there anything you'd like to see added from it? Taken away? Is the July ninth deadline that you're out there appropriate?
I think the forms are fine to me. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So the statement that you have here, are you interested in running for the city council seat at the special election in November twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one?
Obviously, that would have to be changed to February.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Well, actually both, yeah, because it'd be, it'd be both November and probably be November.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Yeah, we'll probably put two dates on there, so.
So where would the interest forms be available from Melissa then?
We do it from Melissa. We can easily put a link on our, on our website. So if somebody just wants to download it, like I said, my recommendation, but you have, the deadline would be the end of the day on Friday, July ninth.
Okay.
And, you know, it would be submitted into basically administrative offices. So either myself or Melissa.
So the only way that, the only way they're going to be able to fill this out is online? Can they come and get a copy here?
They can come and get a hard copy at City Center or we'll provide a link to where, or, you know, a link online to where they could download that and fill it out as well, so.
Good.
I would, I would ask that you take a formal action. That basically states, you know, in effort to fill this on interim basis, the council is going to be asking interested candidates to fill out the interest form and to have it into administrative offices by the end of the day. So by four o'clock on July, on Friday, July ninth.
I would make that a motion.
What Matt said.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by myself to have Matt put an interest form together and distribute it.
We'll have it available tomorrow.
Mary, any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Anything else, ma'am?
No.
Okay. Governance, we have public art mission minutes from April eighth, two thousand twenty-one and May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We have the Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from May eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Planning Commission minutes from May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The Planning, Zoning, Building Department Quarterly Report. City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for May twenty, for May of twenty-twenty-one. Tall Grass Noxious Weeds Monthly Report for May-June, two thousand twenty-one. Chief Jefferson, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Sure, unless you have something for me.
Do you agree with that?
Mr. Olson?
Olson?
Paulson. I'll see you if you were awake. Do you have anything else, Ken?
Just one item of note. We've seen, obviously with Drywell, we've seen an increase in the water pumping at the water treatment facility. Nothing to be of alarm. We have plenty of capacity to provide water to the demand of the community at this time. Much thought is worth noting, we've seen flows upwards of three point two, three point three gallon water pumped at our water treatment plant. Typically, we see it with one and a half, two million. So it's roughly about fifty percent increase in the water demand, so. Other's worth noting, obviously, if you drive around town and see tons of people watering the lawns, they typically don't, the tractors are everywhere, the poles would be pulled behind, so. Certainly, we'll probably see more of that, but thought it was worth mentioning.
Thank you.
You're going to have your intern give us a little spiel on what you're doing?
If you have caution about weeds and tall grass, you may be willing to.
All righty. Mark, do you have anything?
I don't have anything else tonight.
All righty. Chad?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Mary?
Well, one thing, we won't be back in the chambers before the Fourth of July. So everybody should have a wonderful Fourth of July, celebrate our independence and be safe.
Dave?
Mary said it all.
Brandon?
Nothing here tonight.
Mary? Matt?
Well, just a little bit after what Mary noted, since we won't be meeting, city offices will be closed on Monday, July fifth, and observance of that July Fourth holiday. So that's the only thing from my desk.
So, Matt, have you heard anything about the Aquatic Center? How has that been going?
It's been busy, so it's been going well, I think. I actually do believe we are fully staffed now, or at least they've hired. I don't know if they've all been trained and ready to, to start, but...
So are they open, I mean, is it full capacity now?
Um, regarding full capacity for staff?
Not only for staff, but...
All the rides.
There's no, there's no COVID restrictions or anything.
No restrictions anymore.
Yeah, you know, and I will notice and, you know, like I said, I think we've had everybody hired. I don't know if we've got everybody necessarily trained. Lifeguards was our biggest need. And so every now and then you may see this, I think the first thing they usually close down is the...
Zip line.
The zip line. And so usually if that's closed, it's probably because we're a little bit short-staffed. But we, it's interesting because people love the zip line, but they also love having the extra space to swim in when the zip line's not in use. So I think it ends up being an all-right exchange for, for our users. But, yeah, they, you know, it's been a great start to the year with the warm weather. I mean, I know they weren't open yesterday with, or I think Sunday and Monday because of the cold weather, but otherwise, it's, we had a great start to the year, so.
My boys have been tearing it up and I've gotten only positive reports.
I caught heck because the zip line wasn't open.
From AJ.
So, you know, just have a safe Fourth of July and be safe. Germents in order.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Brandon to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?